Good evening, everyone. I ask that you please rise for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Your God, there is so much uncertainty around us, so many people who need our prayers. So tonight, we pray for those whose health is compromised by the coronavirus or other health issues, please be a source of healing for them. For those who suffer from economic impact of the virus, be a source of hope for them, for the healthcare workers and first responders, for other public servants who put themselves in harm's way, harms way, please be a source of protection. For our leaders in the world, our country, states, cities, as they seek to help to manage the challenges they face, be a source of wisdom. And for them, tonight, we pray for the family of George Floyd, please be a source of comfort for them. Let us recognize that in Fergus Falls, while it is easy for us to feel removed, we are not removed from this situation. We grieve for their family. We grieve for the pain and fear that has been expressed in Minnesota and across the country. We pray for those gathering in Fergus Falls tonight that they do so peacefully. Let us all recognize our part in these challenging times to fix these systems that cause injustice. And we all have work to do, so we pray for your courage and grace to do this work together. We pray for law enforcement, that they be a source of safety and protect them. For those who riot and destroy, taking advantage of this crisis, be a source of restraint. For those who seek justice, be a source of righteousness. And for those who are scared, be a source of peace. Help us to turn away from concern for self and turn our hearts, hands, and prayers toward the concerns of others. We ask for these things in your heavenly name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. It is 5:30 June 1, 2020, and I will call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Gustafson. Gustafson?
Here.
Hicks?
Yeah.
Fish?
Here.
Hagberg?
Here.
Kwame?
Here.
Ruffer?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Arnison?
Here.
We have a quorum. Our first item on the agenda this evening is the approval of the agenda, and I will call on our city administrator, Andrew Brumseth, for any additions or corrections.
Yeah, thank you, your honor. Good evening, members. I hope everybody's doing well. We do have a few changes to the agenda this evening. I have one item to remove and then two to add. So first, under Board Committee and Department Reports, we're going to remove the bonding request update. I am going to bring back information in two weeks related to that. The amount that is in the House Bonding Bill for our project is less than what we were asking for, and so staff is working on significantly reducing the scope of that project and bringing back options to the council to consider in a couple of weeks. So we're going to, in the meantime, discuss with the Vidin Trust and other folks who are committed funders, and we'll bring back more information in two weeks on that. Under New Business, we're going to add two items. The first is City Utility Extension Cost Share for Platt Properties Phase Two. And then we need to appoint a city council member to serve on the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan Project Management Team.
All right. Thank you, Andrew. With that, I would entertain a motion accepting the amended agenda.
Fish.
Thank you, Jim.
Motion, Fish.
Thank you, Jim.
Second, Arnison.
Thank you, Justin. Roll call, please.
Gustafson. Gustafson. Caroline, are you there? Hicks?
Yes.
Fish?
Yes.
Hagberg?
Yes.
Kwame?
Yes.
Ruffer?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Arnison?
Yes.
And then Gustafson, do we have you yet, Caroline?
We'll move along. Hopefully Caroline will join us, but that resolution is approved. That motion, I should say, is approved. Item, there are no public hearings this evening under awarding of bids. The first item is the resolution awarding the bid for Public Improvement 8221, which is the water reservoir project to Champion Coatings, Inc., in the amount of $448,200. I'll call on our city engineer, Brian Uvaro. Good evening, Brian.
Thank you. Good evening, your honor, and members of the council. Yes, on Tuesday, May 18, bids were opened for Public Improvement 8221. We received a total of three bids at the time of the closing. Champion Coatings Incorporated submitted the lowest bid in an amount of $448,200. The engineer's estimate at the time was $565,000. The bids have been tabulated and validated. I recommend this contract be awarded. If awarded, this project could be begun late summer here and substantially completed in fall, with the final completion scheduled for spring of 2021. I've outlined the total costs in that cost breakdown table included in your packet, estimating a total estimated project costs of $534,815. We, city previously issued bonds to cover this project. Sufficient bonds are in amount from the 2019 B bond proceeds to cover this amount. I've also included the bid abstract for additional detail if you'd like. So at this time, I'm just recommending award the construction services contract to Champion Coatings in the amount of $448,200.
Thank you, Brian. With that, I would open up to the council if someone would like to offer that resolution before we get to the discussion.
Kwame, I'd like to...
Thanks, Scott. Thanks, Krista, I believe, was the second. All right, Scott, did you have a... Scott, did you have a question as well? No? Okay. Any discussion from the council before we call for the vote? Roll call, please.
Gustafson. Hicks?
She went on the intercom, she's not able to get access to the call. She's trying from her cellphone.
Try it again, Caroline, now you're unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Now we can. Okay, so...
Can you hear me?
Yes. Do you... What's your vote? Is your voting in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Hicks?
Yes.
Fish?
Yes.
Hagberg?
Yes.
Kwame?
Yes.
Ruffer?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Arnison?
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Second item is a resolution accepting the quote for Public Improvement 5332, the 2020 Seal Cove project from Aztec Corp. in the amount of $79,421.26. And again, I'll call on our city engineer, Brian Uvaro.
Thank you, your honor. On Monday, May 26, quotes were due for this project. This is an annual project, prevent and maintenance project that we do throughout the city. Aztec, referred to as Asphalt Surface Technologies Corporation, submit the lowest quote in the amount of $79,421.26. The estimated, engineer's estimate was approximately $116,800. Based on these prices, I'm recommending this quote be accepted. Like similar past years, this work is scheduled to be completed by September 15, 2020. As noted, we levy approximately $130,000, $129,600, to be precise. That was budgeted for the 2020 annual budget. I'm estimating this project with street sweeping and city staff and engineering will estimate a price at $99,300. Sufficient funds are available, so at this time, I'm requesting to accept a quote from Aztec Corp. in the amount of $79,421.26.
Thank you, Brian. And then I just had a question for Bill here, but you can help me. I'm assuming someone's wondering if we budget for $129 and we have a $40,000, $50,000, that goes into another area of street improvements, is that correct?
Yes. Typically, in past, we've carried these funds forward and reserved them for the same sort of work. However, this year, I'm projecting to apply some of this funding to our annual mill and overlay projects.
Perfect. Great. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Brian. With that, I would entertain a resolution from the council before we enter into discussion.
I'll make that.
Thank you. Brent?
Second, Fish.
Thank you, Jim. Any discussion from the council? Questions? No? Roll call, please.
Gustafson?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Fish?
Yes.
Hagberg?
Yes.
Kwame?
Yes.
Ruffer?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Arnison?
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Tonight, we have a resolution acknowledging the retirement and 15 years of service from Ed Shea, and I will lead that retirement resolution. Whereas Ed Shea submitted his intent to retire from the Fergus Falls Fire Department effective June 1, 2020, and whereas Ed began his service as a firefighter in the city of Fergus Falls and the surrounding areas on January 28, 2005, whereas Ed has held numerous roles in the Fergus Falls Fire Department, including firefighter, assistant driver/operator and driver/operator, and whereas Ed has been a member of the Fergus Falls Fire Department Honor Guard and has been a strong advocate for the fire prevention throughout his service to the department, now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Fergus Falls, Minnesota, to accept Ed Shea's resignation from the Fergus Falls Fire Department and thank him for his 15 years of dedicated service to the city of Fergus Falls. The above and foregoing resolution was offered at a regular council meeting on June 1, 2020 by council member Jim Fish, who moved its adoption, was seconded by council member
Arnison.
Justin Arnison, and it was adopted by the following vote. Roll call, please.
Gustafson?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Fish?
Yes.
Hagberg?
Yes.
Kwame?
Yes.
Ruffer?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Arnison?
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Thank you, Ed. There are 10 items on the consent agenda this evening. There's a copy in your packet. Claire and Lynn have also put a copy on the board, on the screen for us. If there's any items that someone, anyone would like to take off and discuss individual, we will entertain that now.
Could we do six and seven?
Sure. Six and seven. Any thing else from anyone else? If there are none, I would entertain a resolution adopting the other eight items.
I'll make that resolution.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Caroline. Roll call, please.
Gustafson?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Fish?
Yes.
Hagberg?
Yes.
Kwame?
Yes.
Ruffer?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Arnison?
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Item number six is the resolution approving a variance for Sundance Frontier Ventures as recommended by the Planning Commission. Anthony, did you have a question on that? Comment?
I think the biggest thing was that, obviously, we had a couple of residents that had concerns, and I know that, obviously, Nikki Nelson spoke at the Planning Commission, but I just want to make sure that she was, you know, we're going to follow through. Yeah, I mean, her biggest concern is that, obviously, already today, without any development on there, she has water issues on the lot between her and kind of her neighbor. And it so says that we, as a city, will work with them during construction to make sure that we don't have a problem, you know, going forward. And I just want to know, how do we think we're going to address that to make sure it doesn't happen? Because once she starts getting water in her basement, then, you know, the remedies are probably expensive.
Yeah. Thank you, Anthony. Brian, would you like to respond?
Yeah, your honor. Just a point of clarification, is this referring to during construction or post-construction? Because the stormwater management...
It was post-construction, Brian.
Sure, sure. Yeah, that, in regards to the construction, yes, there is a NPDs permit. With including, with that particular permit just to apply, you have to have a working plan, which is your stormwater pollution prevention plan. That takes into account the type of soils, the BMPs such as silt fence, what measures need to be in place to control that stormwater, being it's a land disturbance activity. That permit terminates upon the completion. It's a fluid document, obviously, based on rainfall events, along with inspections. It terminates upon permanent vegetation, site vegetation. Now, for going forward, yes, we do a hydraulic study model when it comes to stormwater management, pre and post, per our ordinance. The post-developmental, following construction cannot exceed pre-developmental. We look to enhance also with water quality. Based on some of those conversations that I believe Nikki had some concerns with, we have other avenues if we do encounter some potential areas of ponding or runoff control. We generally will look to see if we can do added measures, such as additional stormwater pipes that generally branch off from the street and consider like backyard drains, if we can help do that as well. And then the grading plans as well will help try to address some of the concerns, not to mention the design. The street preliminary design indicates it would be a curb and gutter, a lot of metal flows running to the curb and gutter where it's conveyed into the catch basin system, and ultimately into the permanent stormwater pond that I don't have in front of me, but I believe is an outlot located closer to the south. So there's been some preliminary design, but we really look at what it says in our stormwater management manual when it comes to, you know, concerns such as this.
Right. Thank you, Brian.
All right. Is the same, Anthony, I assume the same concern with item eight? I'm sorry, seven?
Correct.
Okay. Would someone like to offer a resolution approving? I think we can do those two together. If someone liked to do that, then we can get further discussion.
I'd make that, your honor.
Thank you, Anthony. Is there a second?
I'll second that, your honor.
Thank you. So just to be clear, we're approving the variance and the preliminary plat for Sundance Frontier Ventures as recommended by the Planning Commission. Is there any further discussion from the council? Roll call, please.
Gustafson?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Fish?
Yes.
Hagberg?
Yes.
Kwame?
Yes.
Ruffer?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Arnison?
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, tonight, we have two resolutions that we'll need to act on. First is the resolution authorizing the request for proposals for the sale of property located at 320 West Alcott Avenue, and I will call on Guy Taylor to work with us to that issue.
Thank you, your honor. I believe it was in early 2019, the city acquired this property from a mortgage company. It was a blighted property and really bad disrepair. They deeded the property over to us. We all worked through a few title issues, and we, the city demoed the property, the house and the garage, and we leveled it, seeded it, so it's been sitting vacant for a little over a year. Now, we're seeking the council's authorization to go up for a request for proposals to redevelop the property. It's a lot 50 by 142 in an R2 zone, so we're looking for proposals that would benefit the community in tax rolls, getting another property on that, and then it would hopefully be a property or a structure that would complement the surrounding houses also. So just seeking your approval to have that request for proposals put out and give a month for the proposals to be submitted, so they'd be due by July 2.
Thank you, Guy. Someone like to offer that before we get into discussion?
I'll offer that. I'll second it. Jim?
Brent?
Thank you, Brent. Thank you, Jim. Any discussion from the council? Questions? Comments? Roll call, please.
Gustafson?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Fish?
Yes.
Hagberg?
Yes.
Kwame?
Yes.
Ruffer?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Arnison?
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Item number two is a resolution authorizing the city to provide support for permanent supportive housing projects, and I will call on our city administrator, Andrew Brumseth.
Yeah, thank you, your honor, members. That should be a resolution of support. This is the project that Michael Olson with the HRA and other partners spoke with us about a month ago. They're looking at the application being due either this month or next. I know Michael's on the call if anybody has any questions, but they're hoping that the organizations that would be impacted by this permanent supportive housing project would be able to issue letters or resolutions of support. So that's the request before you this evening. We would simply provide that to the HRA, and they could include that resolution in their submittal to Minnesota Housing.
Thank you, Andrew. We'll have discussion. First, let's get a resolution. If you'd like to introduce or offer that resolution?
I'll offer, your honor.
Thank you, Justin.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Anthony. Discussion? All right. If there are none? Roll call, please.
Gustafson?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Fish?
Yes.
Hagberg?
Yes.
Kwame?
Yes.
Ruffer?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Arnison?
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Tonight, we have claims in the amount of $887,823.84, and if there are any questions, we would direct them to our finance director. I see, Jim, would you like to offer that resolution? Thank you.
Yes, I would.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Krista. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Gustafson?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Fish? Fish?
Yes.
Hagberg?
Yes.
Kwame?
Yes.
Ruffer?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Arnison?
Yes.
That resolution is approved. There are no reports from staff, administrative officers. Under Old Business, item number one is a resolution reinstating the tax abatement program. And Andrew, do you want to take this?
Sure, yes. Thank you, your honor, members. At the last meeting, it was decided by a majority of council members to terminate the tax abatement program relating to housing that we had in place. Since that meeting, I've had a few of you reach out to me, and Councilmember Arnison has expressed a desire to reconsider his vote on that item, so I would turn it over to Councilmember Arnison to talk about his reconsideration, and then if the council wants to take additional action on that, they are free to do so.
Thank you, Andrew. Go ahead, Justin.
All right, thank you. And after the last meeting, I wasn't crystal clear on what we were voting on in terms of the inability. I thought if that got voted down, that the tax abatement went away, and I'm for the program, so I wasn't clear on last week. So I talked with Andrew, and I think I've talked with quite a few developers as well since that meeting, and, you know, my concern with that, a couple of things. First and foremost, you know, we supported the county's initiative in the fall of 19, which led developers down the path of planning on that, and the decisions that were made a couple of weeks ago affected folks that have put time, resources, and money into current development in light of the COVID that we're dealing with. And so I am for supporting and holding up our end of the bargain for the commitments we made on supporting that plan, and I know that there's some discussion for future applications for 2021 and possibly revisiting. Do we need to adjust the current rebate that we have in place? But I think for the ones that are currently in for 2020, I guess my feeling would be we need to honor that. We've worked really hard to change the process and change our relationship with developers, and we've tried to foster creating development and a smoother process, and I feel like we took a few steps back last, a couple of weeks ago, and I don't know everybody's feeling on that, but my intent wasn't to do that, and I want it to be clear to the developers that, not blending on the Zoom meetings, but it's hard to have a conversation and get a feeling of the decisions and impacts we're making to the tune of millions of dollars of projects that we potentially have at the city right now. And I think we should embrace this as an opportunity to make sure, one, we can invest in our community, and two, thank people that are willing to invest in our community in light of what's going on. And secondly, we've also talked about making sure people in our community have work, and that is masonry people, that is sheetrock people, that is the people that are going to be doing this work. And so I want to have discussion on if we're willing to reinstate that for this year. So I guess that's my thoughts, and I'll turn it over to anybody else that wants to say anything.
Thanks, Justin. Is that a, let's get a resolution. Is that a resolution to reinstate the program, Justin?
Yeah, there is a resolution.
Thank you. And is there a second to that before others weigh in? Thank you, Jim. We have a resolution?
I was against us doing that in the first place, and I'm still against it. I've had a couple, three calls from individuals that wonder why we did it. You know, you put this out there for them, and then all of a sudden, you take it back, and it doesn't, it doesn't sit well with them, and it doesn't sit well with me. You don't put something out there, and then all of a sudden, halfway through, you say, "Well, no, we're not going to do that." So I think it should be reinstated.
Thank you, Jim. I agree with you.
And I will vote for it if it comes up.
Thank you, Jim.
I got a word to say?
Yeah, thank you. And Scott, did you have a councilman, Kwame, did you have your, like, make a comment?
I'm also going to vote in favor of reinstating the program. I believe it was a valuable program when it was introduced, and I think we need to stick with our commitment on that and what was made in the fall, and so I will be voting to reinstate the resolution.
Thanks, Scott. Brent?
Yeah, pretty much my views are, in some ways, are still the same, but the fact is, I've talked to a few developers, and I've talked to a few, and I've talked to one of the other councilmen and everything else, and the one thing that I'm looking at is there, the people who followed the process and, you know, with our planning commission, who's not been exactly having meetings, that pushed a lot of things back. There's a lot of people who already have a lot of money invested in this with the idea that they would be getting the tax rebate program, and with that, I'm willing to, once again, push it back to the date that Anthony originally wanted to cancel it, which is December 31, but I still would like to, at that point, put it so we're not just taking the rug out from underneath people. I'd like to push it back, and then at that point, we'll assess it, postpone it at that time, so we can see what our financial situation is going to be like. You know, I see the, all the benefits of the tax revenue and everything else, and I've been in favor of those projects from day one, but that was the reason why last time I turned around and asked for it to be suspended, not canceled until we knew. But with not taking into consideration the amount of people who've already invested a lot of money and energy into their projects with this understanding, I'm willing to say, I'm willing to say, okay, I'd still like to postpone it as of December thirty-first, but I would reinstate it until that point. And, uh, that way people know now to adjust their projects according to the postponement date until we can see what time we're going to get our, what our financial situation is going to be like next year.
Yeah. Thanks, Brent. Just for clarification, the, the resolution tonight is reinstating the program. If the council wishes to take a look at this as of Jan-, you know, for January first of, of, or, or at any point in the future, I should say, then they, they can do that. But this, correct me if I'm wrong, but this just simply reinstates the program, correct?
That's correct.
No. Okay. So just so we're all clear, this is, this is not putting an end date. This is just simply reinstating with the ability for the council to take that into consideration at a later date. Okay. Any other, other comments? Yes, Tom?
Your honor. Uh, yeah, I just, uh, want to say thanks to Justin for, uh, bringing this, but this back up. I also heard from, uh, several people after the last meeting and, um, and realized that, that, you know, kind of like what Justin said, we've, I, I, I think that the city's got kind of a bad rap with some developers and builders for whatever reason. And, uh, we don't need to do anything to, um, to possibly earn that. Uh, and I, I think there, there might be ways, if you look at it from a budgetary perspective, that we can save money or trim back or something, but I don't think that ending this program, um, you know, either now or down the road is the way to do that. I think that this kind of investment is going to pay, pay us back many, many times over. So I, um, you know, I just want, um, builders and developers to feel like the city is ready to do business with them and, and we're welcome with them. And, um, I look forward to, to hearing from them to find out how we can make that as easy as possible.
All right. Any other, uh?
Your, your honor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Your honor, I would like to say something. I mean, um, obviously my original proposal was obviously to, you know, ask staff to come back and, you know, basically make a presentation on what, what we've seen of the program, you know, in this year. And so that basically come January twenty-twenty-one, there would obviously be a decision. Um, I, I'm personally, obviously, I'm just not in favor of this program full stop, but I think partly because I don't think it's particularly means tested. You know, we, we talk about affordable housing and, you know, I think it, I think a program should be directed more towards helping that, you know, that, that affordable house. Um, you know, permits that we've kind of, and houses that we've granted have been, you know, even, even homes that are four hundred plus thousand dollars. You know, those people are, you know, a- able to meet, you know, their property tax commitments. I think if we're going to do a program like this, the average house in two thousand and nineteen in Fergus Falls sold for two hundred thousand dollars. Um, you know, what we're told is that it costs more than two hundred thousand dollars to build the equivalent of a two hundred thousand dollar home that sells. So I think the program should be focused more towards the affordable house because there are not many people in, in Fergus Falls that can afford, you know, greater than two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand dollar homes. You know, the median household income in Fergus Falls is fifty-seven thousand dollars in two thousand and eighteen. Um, you know, the, the per capita is thirty thousand. You know, we, we have a lot of people that, you know, basically struggle to kind of make, make ends meet. And I know the program is obviously to encourage people to build, but I think I would be more in favor of focusing more of the monies towards affordable housing, um, as, as to kind of what, for want of a better term, premium, premium housing. And diverting money from a premium house to, towards, uh, you know, an affordable housing program. I, I will still vote against it because I don't agree with doing it, um, in, in general. Uh, I, I, I don't, I mean, I, I understand the logic of it, uh, for sure, but, um, you know, I, I think it's not, I, I mean, I, when I asked, um, obviously, you know, how many houses, how many permits in the county have been issued this year over last year? Um, the county doesn't have that information. So, you know, how are you going to judge that this program actually worked? You know, when you look at the city, um, you know, are we, are we, do we have more permits issued this year than last year, um, at this point in time, dollar-wise? No. So, you know, we're, we're, you know, we're giving money away and it's, it's going to be a tough candy Christmas this year. And, uh, we have to look at how we increase revenue as much as we, we do about how we're going to c- control costs. We can only cut costs to a certain point before services deteriorate. And, you know, the vast majority of people in Fergus pay property tax. There's obviously only going to be an elite few that do not pay property tax on, on their new houses. So, I mean, that's my position. I, I, I appreciate, I'm, I'm on my own on it, so. It is what it is.
Thanks, Anthony. Jim, did you want?
But I think before we, we reinstate the, re-add the program for twenty-twenty-one, we should see what are the benefits.
Thanks, Anthony. Jim, go ahead.
I would, uh, make a motion or a resolution to reinstate the program.
Yeah, we've got a resolution on, on the books and a second, uh, by you as a matter of fact. So, um, we'll hang tight. We're going to vote, but, uh, Justin, you have a, Justin, you offered the resolution. Go ahead. You had a comment?
Yes, I've got one more comment. I, I appreciate, uh, Mr. Hicks's comments and I think, I don't want to muddy the mulch. Um, but maybe after we vote on that motion, I think there may be some validity in circling the wagons with the county, have them come in, go over the intent of the program and talk, talk as a council to see if we need to alter the program, uh, but, but in, in a goal to continue the program. I think, I, I don't think we're all that far apart in terms of, uh, where we're trying to go with this. It's just maybe more having a clearer picture. So I think, I don't want to include it in this motion, but maybe afterwards if you, if, or if you need another motion, separate motion, but I think, um, it would be worthwhile to, to recircle this and, and review it for twenty-twenty-one before we potentially start getting applications for next year, uh, building season. So.
Sure. Thank you, Justin. And I'm going to call for the roll here just about. I would say this, uh, with, uh, in respects to the program and I, I, as others have mentioned, have heard from developers who have said that this is a consideration and they're, and they're, uh, constructing with inside the city limits. Some of them have actual properties both located inside and outside the city limits, first of all. So this, uh, you know, according to developers, and I have no reason to not believe, uh, what they're saying, that this is a consideration. And, and, and as far as not paying property taxes, that's very minimal when you have a four hundred thousand dollar house, as you mentioned. Uh, over the lifespan of that house, they will be paying, paying plenty of property taxes and I think we all want that. I, I, I get, I get what everyone's saying. Uh, Anthony, I understand your point. I do think we can look at that, but, um, I do think there is some validity to the fact that that is an incentive that people take advantage of and there are reasons for, for, uh, building inside the city limits. Uh, I did say, uh, last week when I was approached by some developers that I would give them the opportunity, if there's anything else they'd like to add, and I see some on the, uh, on the call, um, we, we, we're going to vote here shortly, but if anyone on the call wants to add anything that hasn't been said already, uh, I'm not sure how you're going to let us, you know, we're just going to unmute people and let them talk. We can't, we can't, you can't see. All right, all right, all right, all right. Okay. Back to the council. Roll call, please.
Gustafson.
Yes.
Hicks.
No.
Fish.
Yes.
Hagberg.
Yes.
Kwame.
Yes.
Ruffer.
Yes.
Thompson.
I was hoping to be able to get a last word on this before it goes because if this is a complete reinstatement or one without a timeline on it, if there's no timeline on it, then I'm going to have to vote no.
Okay. Thank you.
Arnison.
Yes.
Resolution is approved. Sorry, Brian, I didn't see your hand up. I would have, uh, offered you that opportunity. You're, 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 you're just a big gray, gray screen right now, so I can't see it. Item number two is a resolution to, to approve the tax rebate for eighteen twenty-one, eighteen twenty-three, eighteen twenty-five, and eighteen twenty-seven Cascade Street South. Um, and Andrew, did you want to talk to this?
Yeah, thank you, your honor, members. Similar to the last item, I had a few councilmembers on this one actually reach out to me, um, after the meeting wanting to reconsider their vote. So I will, uh, leave it up to them if maybe, uh, council member, council member Gustafson wants to kick it off. Um, as one who voted, uh, against the rebate, she wants to reconsider her vote, uh, for these applications.
Caroline, go ahead.
All right, um, I wanted to reconsider, obviously, because of a lot of the discussion that we had previously and Justin basically said it a lot. Um, and then if you remember in the last council meeting, later in the meeting, I asked if it would be possible to get him back on the docket once we got it reinstated. So this was me just getting it reinstated and I'm in favor of, um, giving that tax abatement and, um, moving forward with this program.
Thank you, Caroline. Is that, that's a resolution, I assume, that, uh, to approve the tax rebate for eighteen, for these four properties?
Yeah, that's a resolution.
Thanks. Is there a second before others?
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. Now we'll open up for council discussion.
I got a question.
Go ahead, Brent.
And like I said before, I'm, with, when it comes to the budget and next year with the LGA and everything else, I was willing to extend this out to the end of the year. So for today, I will vote on the ones that are in and I will vote on consideration on ones through the end of the year, but, um, after the end of the year, it's really going to depend on the, uh, where we're sitting with the LGA and everything else on whether I vote on any future ones yet. So that's just where I sit on the matter.
Thanks, Brent. Any other, uh, comments of the council? Anyone else? In the audience have any comments before we call for the roll? Roll call, please.
Gustafson.
Yeah.
Hicks.
No.
Fish.
Yes.
Hagberg.
Yes.
Kwame.
Yes.
Ruffer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Arnison.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Uh, we have two items, uh, under new business. First is this, uh, city utility cost survey plat for, uh, I'm sorry, cost survey for plat property phase two. Is that correct? Did I write that down accurately?
Yeah, pretty close, your honor, members. Uh, it's the, um, city utility extension cost share for plat properties phase two. I, I realize I was speaking fast earlier.
Well, I just, I wrote it down. I just can't read it right. Go ahead. Thank you. Brian, would you like to take this item?
Yes, thank you, honor. Yes, this is in regards to, uh, new pending development, the River Oaks Landing Phase Two development. I have a map included, but I just want to give a little background history before we review this map that's in, included. Uh, during the utility design phase, uh, interstate engineering and myself, we've been evaluating potential other options to enhance, uh, the proposed utilities for the site uh, that could better serve, uh, the city beyond what is needed for this site. As we know, on Elcott Avenue, there's a particular area noted on the south side that is not currently served by sewer and water, city sewer and water. Um, there are some other areas as well, but this has always been one that's been identified as not having available service around there. And when I refer to enhancements, generally enhancements, uh, we kind, we do contribute on some, uh, petition projects, but we'll, uh, do enhancements such as a deeper gravity sewer, larger diameter pipes, or lateral connections, uh, lateral connections to the water main, uh, for system looping. So, uh, what we have identified in this utility enhancement options is in regards to sanitary sewer and the water main. Now, if you can turn to the map that I've included, I apologize, it's a large scale map and hopefully we can kind of see, uh, zoom in and review a few items. Uh, but just to see, uh, what you're seeing right now is a scaled map of, uh, the housing, apartment housing complex along some twin homes. Uh, is what's your, the, this is oriented to looking to the north, uh, to the bottom, running left and right, east and west. Uh, it's a little hatch line that's representing Elcott Avenue. If we look to the north, uh, top of the page, uh, Western Drive is a cul-de-sac that terminates there. And then a trail was built traversing this property that was associated with River Oaks Phase Two development, which is not shown on the map, but you can kind of see some of the driveway layouts. Now, in the center of the map, uh, we have a few color-coded options, uh, for the sanitary sewer system and the water main. I want to point out a few features, uh, on the west side, uh, kind of proposing to extend all the water main a little bit farther than is what needed by the developer, uh, to have the availability for adjacent neighbors. On the east side, right-hand side of the map, um, showing is, it's a rather, this is a loop connection to an existing uh, water main that is terminated at the property line and we'd like to see that looped into the new system. And then more importantly, when you look to the south right there, I'm showing two lines right there as well. Uh, that is a boring, trenchless boring beneath Elcott and positioning some service stubs at the south end of Elcott, um, in regards to this develop, for this site. So when I remember, when I just want to recap on some of the water main enhancements, I mentioned the east loop, lateral connection to the west, lateral connection to the south beneath Elcott, and we're also, uh, looking to upsize the water main from a six inch to an eight inch water main. Sanitary sewer, a little bit more expensive, but, uh, the existing, the existing site, to serve the site, the average burial depth of the sanitary sewer is about twelve and a half feet. Now, if the city wants to have the ability to gravity serve the portion of Elcott in the south, we done a preliminary design and indicating we'd have to install a sewer a little bit deeper, approximately about twenty feet deep. And then we also bore beneath Elcott Avenue as well. So based on the engineer's estimated cost proposal and to maintain, if the city's at all interested, I solicited from two contractors following the competitive bidding guidelines. Uh, we, to find the accurate numbers that we're looking for, uh, quote package was consisted of a base bid and an alternate bid schedule to determine, like you mentioned, these actual costs. The base bid schedule consists of the utility design with enhancements, the deeper sewers, the water main, extra connections. The alternate bid schedule consists of no enhancements, basically whatever utilities are needed to serve this development. Uh, Berry Construction Incorporated submitted the lowest quote for both these schedules. Uh, based on what I know, um, estimating, our pending shares for the council to consider for the ci- city sanitary sewer, uh, to extra depth provided beyond Elcott is approximately a hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred. The city share for the water main and lateral connections is approximately ninety-five thousand, four hundred dollars. I, I'd also like to note too, uh, also showing this map before, my apologies, I never went over. Uh, that shaded yellow, that is a trail, proposed trail, thousand, thousand fifty foot, eight foot wide paved trail two that we're working with a developer that will be handled under a separate agreement to be determined. But at this time, I'm requesting if the council wants to consider and authorize my city staff and the city attorney to execute, uh, a utility cost share agreement, uh, between plat properties in the city of Fergus Falls.
Thank you. Brian, we can do that by resolution. Uh, does someone like to offer that resolution? Before we have discussion?
I'd make that, your honor.
Thank you, Anthony.
I'll second that.
Thank, thank you, Scott. Anyone have any questions or comments for our city engineer? Roll call, please.
Gustafson.
Hang on, I'm sorry. My.
Yes.
I just wanted to say something.
Oh, I'm sorry. City administrator, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry about that. Um, I just wanted to see if there's any questions or discussion first, but as Brian mentioned, um, the yellow shaded area there is the, is a proposed trail. And, uh, in talking to the developer earlier, um, today and, and last week, he's proposing a tax abatement to fund construction of that trail. Um, and we wanted to get the appetite of the council along with this utility discussion on that trail. Um, essentially, if the city wants that trail built, the developer is a willing partner through this tax abatement. If the city does not, uh, seem to care about that trail connection, he's going to continue with his development, uh, without that. So, um, we would bring this back down the road as we put together the abatement agreement and those types of things, but just on a high level, we would be looking at a, about a hundred and forty thousand dollar abatement over a ten-year period, so about fourteen thousand dollars a year. Um, that would cover the construction of the path, the, uh, and then, and then the ground and utility easements related to all the things we talked about today. So, um, we don't need to act on that today, but I did want to get just a few comments or maybe some feedback on whether that's something we should continue to pursue as we did in the first phase of this development with the trail that was built there through the tax abatement. So, um, the other thing I'll mention in relation to that, the abatement would only be related to the apartment building, so only the taxes on the apartment building, not any of the twin homes or single-family homes that Brian was alluding to. And the proposed tax on that apartment, um, would be about fourteen thousand, seven hundred dollars for just the city's portion. Um, so the, uh, abatement would certainly be covered in that amount that the developer's paying for that apartment complex. So, if anybody has any thoughts, it'd be good information to take back to the, to the developer and, uh, then we can proceed with bringing the abatement agreement back if that's something the council.
and, uh, then we can proceed with bringing the abatement agreement back if that's something the council's interested in.
So, go ahead. What's the total cost that you mentioned? I missed it. Of the, of the trail?
The, uh, total cost of the abatement, because there will be portions of the trail funded outside of the abatement, is 140,604 dollars. Yep, 10 years. And again, that's, uh, construction of the trail and it's also the value of the land that the developer's giving up for the trail and then, um, the value of the land related to the utility improvements Brian talked about. So essentially a utility easement um, for the general benefit of the city.
And it connects to the existing trail that was bait, that was, uh, that used tax abatement on the phase one?
Yes, through phase one. We just want to note too, it's not showing, is, uh, the, as you move south, adjacent to Elcott, yes, there would be a constructed along the north. We've talked about the staff too as well and we can have those discussions. I don't recall how many feet it would be to extend, if potentially extend it to the west to meet up with the tower road system, but that's definitely, uh, something we want to seriously take a look at if developers willing to in the city entered an agreement.
And, and when did, you, you've mentioned you don't need a decision tonight, you just wanted to get the temperature of the council, but what, um, when do you, when would you, when would he need to know?
Yeah, we would bring this back to the council within the next few months, um, probably two, three months down the road. Where we work with, um, Baker Tilly on these types of things to put all the documents and the whole package together. The developer has, um, paid the abatement application fee and also an escrow related to that, but we don't want to spend money on something if there's not an appetite for us to proceed with that. And, and he's looking for guidance because he is wanting to start the project sooner than later.
Would it be possible to bring back a, some sort of diagram that tells how that ties into existing trails and how it would be connected, like, to phase one that we use tax abatement on, but then also where the end connection is, if you will, to any distant system?
For the trail, yeah. Oh, certainly. We do have a little bit more detail with aerial imagery that shows, and we can certainly show this particular segment where there's no connectivity. However, it would help provide getting people up to, provide that connectivity up to, from Elcott to the north.
Sure, sure. Any comments, um, from the council?
Your Honor, I, I would say I, I would agree. I, I think I would like to see how it's actually going to connect because if it's going to be a dead end or it's going to put people onto Elcott, you know, we, the reason for doing the other trail was to encourage people to come off Elcott and go on that back road. So, I, I would, I, I think we'd be counterintuitive if we're kind of then going to try to encourage people back onto Elcott. So I think, like you said, a, a bigger kind of schematic of how, how it's going to link up would be preferable.
Thanks. Yeah, I, yeah.
Yeah, we, Your Honor, yeah, we can bring that back. I think that's, that is good. Um, yes, it's certainly, it's not going to connect the way we're proposing it today, but we would allow for that in the future. So we'll, we'll show that on a map. It'll make some sense and I think there may be um, good dialogue around that.
Great, okay. And that's, is that, uh, so we have a resolution approving the, uh, cost share for the plat property. Scott, Scott, did you have a comment?
I'd like to point out, I guess, that, uh, it seems with most new developments now, there aren't any sidewalks ever a part of the plan and in this development, the road goes through the center and that's fine. Uh, so, in that way, I would be speaking in favor of having the trail because it has the effect of providing a sidewalk place for, uh, people to walk and bike. I understand the concerns for it being a potential dead end, particularly to the southwest. Uh, but we don't know what might happen with that property that connects off to the west of that and as it goes over to the roundabout. Uh, it would be nice to be prepared for that. It would be nice to know if there's any chance of those properties being developed soon and what their appetite might be for having this trail continue to cross those properties on the north side of Elcott as it goes west there. And so, to echo the comments made so far, having a larger view of this and maybe some more information as to how it might connect with other things that are out there would be helpful.
Great, thanks Scott. All right, so back to, we're going to vote on the resolution that approves the cost share, uh, or the utility cost share, I should say, for the plat property phase two. Everyone clear what we're voting on? We're going to bring this, uh, trail issue back in two weeks or a month, uh, but right now we're voting on the cost share. Roll call please.
Gustafson.
Yeah.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Heggberg.
Yes.
Kwame.
Yes.
Ruffer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Arnison.
Yes.
A resolution is approved. One more item under new business and that is a representative uh, from the council to be appointed to the biking pedestrian advisory committee.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Members, this is, uh, in relation to the master plan. Um, that's, the trade's approved at the last meeting and the grant approved earlier in the meeting. I don't know if, can you guys mute your microphones? We good? Okay. Um, so, basically for that process, we're, we're asking for a city council member to be appointed to be a part of the, uh, project management team, um, related to the upcoming master plan.
And we can do, thank you, Andrew. We, we can do that with a motion? Someone like to, anyone have anyone in mind? Jim?
Yes, I would like to nominate Mr. Ruffer.
I'm for Ruffer. Who are you for?
What a pleasant surprise that, say that I'm shocked and honored. Um, I just, uh, yeah, I'm just getting into biking, so maybe it'll be something kind of interesting. No, I would, I'd love to do it.
All right, so the motion, who would like to second that?
I think the world will second it.
Thank you, Anthony. Roll call please.
Gustafson.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Heggberg.
Yes.
Kwame.
Yes.
Ruffer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Arnison.
Yes.
A resolution is approved. Congratulations, Tom.
Yeah.
Just a few.
Thank you. I've heard some, uh, some brief remarks.
Did the, uh, did Elizabeth vote for you? Or was she nighting you for your appointment?
Yes. All right.
She drops into the microphone.
Before, uh, before we adjourn, just a couple miscellaneous announcements. I actually, the only mess, the only announcement I wanted to make note of is, uh, this, this Wednesday at noon, we have a brief special meeting, uh, to consider a interim use permit ordinance. So, uh, everyone has the information on that and that's the only item we're considering that day, so it should, should be, should be short, but, uh, make sure we have a forum there. And, uh, if anyone has anything else, otherwise, we're adjourned.